Ready on record.
Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6, et sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, please call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Jaskiewicz.
Here.
Mr. Mozzarella.
Here.
Mr. Pari.
Here.
Mr. Ready.
Present.
Chairman Ibericane.
Present.
We also have a board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Present.
Our board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and your board attorney, Mr. K.
Present.
Let's start over. The plenary agency. This is what I use for my plenary agency. This is really probably for such man as one nation under individual liberty is justice.
It was used to the foundation.
At this point in this evening's meeting, is there any member of the public that has any business to direct this report that is not on this evening's agenda? Here in the scene on. Any correspondence, Nora?
No.
Uh, we have some resolutions?
Yes.
Also move them in the group to do.
I group them for you. There's three groups.
You've got the group one, everyone will move those. Mr. Berkowitz.
Mr. Chairman, I move accept the resolutions for applications. Twenty-two colon seventy-one and twenty-two colon sixty-four.
Some order. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Pari.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Ibericane.
Yes. And now we have group two. Mr. Jaskiewicz, would you like to read those?
Sure. I moved for the adoption of application twenty-two colon seventy-three and application twenty-two colon eleven.
Second, Ready.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Mozzarella.
Yes.
Pari.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Ibericane.
Yes. And group number three.
I move the adoption of application twenty-three colon zero-four, twenty-three colon zero-seven, twenty-two eighty-two, and twenty-two eighty-three.
Second, Berkowitz.
Any discussion, Nora? Call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Pari.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willing. Ibericane.
Yes. Okay, that takes us through all the applications, resolutions. And I guess we're ready to go into the agenda. First application is twenty-two seventy-five Gavin and Valerie Spector. This is a C-varies to construct two-story single family. I know we've heard a lot of testimony on this.
And they've already been sworn, you know, of Mr. Castle.
And, um, how did we leave this?
There's supposed to be a negotiation or discussion with neighbor.
Oh, okay.
With regards to shadow.
Yeah.
And I believe the applicant submitted shadow drawings. We have, we should not.
Should have them.
Yeah.
They have the new materials.
So tell us what has transpired.
Just for the record, just to state your name. You're the architect. You've been sworn. You understand. We're still qualified. So just for the record, can you state, spell your name?
Ron Powell.
Okay, so. What, what, uh...
So we have reached the point of the...
It's on. If you press it, you're going to mute it or shut it off. Make sure it's green. Delay.
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good. We have been through a number of meetings and phone calls and such with Mr. Castle, the neighbor. Mr. Castle, we've, I think, provided him, I hope, everything that he has asked for to date. Whether or not he has reached the point of being comfortable with this or not, we're frankly not sure. Um, we're sort of getting to the point where running out of anything else that we can do to try and meet him halfway. I'm sure he will make his own point in a moment since he's here tonight. Um, the, some of the things that we have gone through, I think perhaps might be of some help to discuss because it, over the period of time that this has been going on, we've had a number of items come up with him and each time we've met, he's sort of added a couple more. So we're a little bit at a loss to know how much further we can go with this. And I think it's getting to the point where you find people are really going to have to look at this and take a view as to what you think is, is fair and reasonable. If I can touch on some of the items, the, um, the first thing that Mr. Castle was concerned about was that his view from his two windows in his living room and also from the three windows from the bedroom in his upper level were going to be blocked by our new home here. Um, also was very concerned about the fact that the sun would be blocked from those windows. And that is what actually drove us to put together the sun studies. Um, as you'll see in the drawings you have, we did studies to show the sun at the height, which is in June, June twenty-first, um, in summer, and showed that there was no shadows whatsoever, um, thrown onto his home. In winter, the height of winter in December, late in the afternoon, we showed another study at four in the afternoon where, of course, we are west of him and as such, in the winter afternoon, by four o'clock, he's starting to get some shadows on the lower windows. But you can see the drawings there and I, I hope they're pretty straightforward. You can see what the situation is. He was also concerned about the fact that there is an area behind his home. He's got a very small backyard, as obviously all the lots in Mount Tabor. And he said, this is an area that he sits out on, in pleasant weather with his friends. And he was concerned that he would lose the sunlight in that area at the back of his home. Again, the sun studies showed that this is definitely not the case, certainly in, in summer, but even in winter, there wasn't even any shadow thrown there. As far as the view is concerned, he's concerned about the height of our new home and we've, we've gone to sort of quite great lengths to try and move, we moved the house as far back as we possibly could in order to give him the view past the front of us. We're three feet from the, or three foot six, I think, from the rear boundary. We couldn't go any further because there are trees back there and we did not want to lose those trees. We could avoid it. But that's as far as we could go. We also moved as far west as we could go with only three feet from the boundary on the western side, which is the downhill side. There is now from our eastern wall, eleven feet from the wall to the boundary. There is six feet from his boundary or the common boundary between us to his wall. So it's actually seventeen feet between us and his house or between the, to be us and his house. We could not get any further down to open up his vista, as it were. Um, we've looked at that as long and hard. We're also by virtue certainly of the fact that we're on the downhill side of him, he can certainly get views from his bedroom windows that he was concerned about. And certainly the, the view straight from the window directly at ninety degrees, he looks into the side of us, but these lots being the size they are, we, we can't do very much about them on. The, he was concerned about the roof pitch. The roof pitch we have is forty-five degrees or twelve-twelve. The roof pitch on his home is actually ten-twelve. The difference is forty degrees on his home, forty-five degrees on ours. I, you know, I'd find anybody to pick up five degrees between a roof pitch, but it is what it is. Um, he made point to me that if we, because we have a, um, a large, reasonably large grate room on the second floor, because this is the lifestyle that Val and Gavin want. And in order to make that spacious, we went with a vaulted ceiling. Um, he said that if we put a flat ceiling in there, we could lower the pitch of the roof so that he could see past it better. He also, if we weren't willing to do that, which we're not happy to do, he was, um, he suggested that we could put even a barn-style roof on the house in order to lower it to some further degree. Again, we would like to stay with the forty-five degrees we have because we've shown there that from the sun studies that we really are not impinging on him very much at all. And even the views, quite frankly, um, most of them are okay. You can see past us. Having gone through all that and what we tried to accommodate him by moving this part far back as we could, the next item he brought up was the fact that he felt because we, I quote, "were so far back on the lot," because we were trying to get back to open it up for him, "we're now so far back on the lot that we no longer conform with what he believes is the character of the street because we should be right up at the front line, the same as here." Most of the houses there, as you probably wear, are on the front boundary. We have set back. Now, when I say set back, if you look at the two-story portion of the house, that is, again, seventeen feet from the front boundary. We have a single-story section at the front of the house design, which is six feet deep. We have a veranda in front of that, which is four foot six. In truth, we're only six foot six now from that front boundary to the face of the post of the veranda, if you will. So we're hardly a long way out of line. And quite frankly, having said that, to me, and now I'm looking at the aesthetic of not our own house, but the whole area, if you're driving down, going down the hill, down a heading place, the fact that this is really the last home on the street, there is a small portion of the rear yard or the side yard for the house next door, but as you go down the street, the fact that we are slightly back from the street tends to open up that vista as you get to the net, to the street at the bottom, which to me, quite frankly, makes perfect sense and I think is something that helps, not hinders. Why we are necessary or considered necessary to conform the line down the street, frankly, I don't quite understand, but, okay. The, I'm just checking the notes. I had a number of things here that, um, we went over with him during the course of all of this. Um, he's very concerned also about the fact that we have three garage doors. Now, these garage doors, as you don't know if you can pick up at all on the drawings, but they actually are set back under the veranda. So there's somewhat in shadow underneath the house to some degree, but nothing is anywhere too far from anything, obviously, in Mount Tabor. But he considers that it is out of character with the street, again, us having three garage doors. He has one and I haven't counted all of the others, but he feels that's not in character with the style or the character of the street. He also questioned whether we were going to produce a design here that is in keeping with the, the general style of Mount Tabor in the Victorian style. And I assured him, yes, that is definitely the intent. It is not shown so much on the drawings because, quite frankly, these drawings have not been developed. These drawings are massive in blocking studies. At this point, we are trying to find out what we can design and what we can get permission for before we put in all the time and effort to start detailing all of these little things. Obviously, when you're getting into Victorian design, there's a lot more work to be done on, for want of another name, dressing up the Victoriana. So that's pretty much, I think, all I have as far as the points that he has raised. I...
Can I, uh...
Like, comment?
Um, uh, for the style of the house, one of the, the things that we included, uh, the, the page that has the four pictures on it and the one in the corner, uh, is, is like a rendered computer picture, that is of the plan. It printed a little dark, so it would be a little bit brighter, but, you know, I put the gingerbread on there, the color of the house, all that stuff. So that's hopefully what...
So you, you have jumped through quite a number of hoops to get to this point.
Correct.
And I, I'm guessing you've had a degree of discussions with the neighbor. And I'm going to ask you a very pointed question. You think you're ever going to satisfy him? Or does he just keep throwing landmines in front of you to, to just keep delaying this? Because that's the feeling I'm getting.
It's a feeling.
Because I, I've been doing this for thirty-four years and I've never seen a situation like this where a neighbor just keeps coming back with more, more, never, never. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm just concerned.
Well...
Excuse me. You'll have your turn. You'll have your turn, okay? You'll have your turn. Give me my continue.
There's something that I think I would like to say about this, if I may, because it bothers me frankly. Unfortunately, and I, I feel his pain, Mr. Castle has a real issue. He has two vehicles. He has one garage, one vehicle in the garage. The other one, he's got in the photograph that you, I think, may still have, which shows the front of their house. You can see where his SUV is parked sort of half on the street, half in the front of the door in the garage. That's hardly a very practical or, you know, acceptable situation. Absolutely understand that. His issue is really, he has a piece, strip of land on his west, namely against the common boundary with us, that is six feet wide. It's obviously not enough to park a vehicle in. He did approach us at the very, very outset of all of this and asked if inspectors would be good enough to give him two feet because we have a fairly reasonable setback on that side, namely at that...
But you only have twenty-seven hundred square feet in a, in a, what's the zone? Fifteen thousand square feet?
That's right.
That's a, that's an unreasonable request, a terribly unreasonable request.
The point, and I understand his issue and I feel his pain, but what he was looking for is two feet, which gives him eight feet, is enough to get, he was going, I think he intended, paving that, using it as either somewhere he can drive around back...
Well, I don't think you can, if he's right on the property line, you can't pave right up to a property line without a variance.
Well, he was looking to see if he could get an easement of two feet from the inspectors. That solves his headache and I understand that and I'm not knocking that. But I've been at this game for a long, long time. This is not my first rodeo. And I've seen many situations where people start really pushing things because they have an agenda. And I can't quite get past it in my own mind and not, this is me personally, that if he could get that two feet, he's got his problem solved. And the only way perhaps is keep at it and keep at it until we give up in sheer frustration and say, you've got your two feet, you know, get on with it sort of thing. But that's my feeling and I sort of feel that we're being coerced with all of these things that keep coming up and up and up to try and see if he can resolve his headache. But again, my thought, not, not spectators, not anything else, it's just, I've been there before and, anyway, I won't say anymore on the point.
Any questions by the ward?
No.
No?
No.
Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given to you? Test questions. I hear none. Come on up.
All right, sir. I can only ask questions at this time.
That's right.
You can wait for me later. Can you please explain to me when I asked for an easement from the, from the inspectors?
You mentioned this very, very early on in the piece when we first, first talked.
So I'm a lawyer and I deal with facts and I deal with opinion. When did I ever ask the inspectors for an easement? Because I never did.
This was brought up in late February as well.
Did I ask them for an easement during these proceedings?
That is what I recall.
Okay. Um, sir, I'll have an opportunity to respond later, but wasn't it the case that I raised three, or excuse me, four specific issues with you? One, I had a problem with the three-car garage. It wasn't within the character of the community, that's one. Wasn't also that the setback eviscerated the view from my backyard and it wasn't in alignment with the community? Wasn't also that the height of the second floor grate room reached the height of a third story for a home and four wasn't the lot coverage? Those are the four things. Weren't those the four things that I discussed here?
The lot coverage is part of Mount Tabor.
That neither answered nor addressed my question. My question was, did I not lay out quite specifically that the issues and concerns that we had were the three-car garage not being within the character of the community, the setback not being within the character or plan of the block, the height of the second floor or the grate room with the vaulted ceiling being too high and that the lot coverage was a concern?
The lot coverage?
The lot, yes, the lot coverage.
I don't think for a lot because the lot coverage is part of the overall.
Okay.
We don't compile that in shape or form.
Okay. Um, did I...
You're never, you're never going to conform with the lot coverage. That's going to be a variance if you put a, a, a large shed on their property. I'm being facetious, but...
The reason I asked the question, sir, is because I'm being grossly misrepresented and mischaracterized, but we didn't, the plan that's before you is no different than the plan that was submitted to you. I met with the gentleman.
Wait, 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 wait. What's the question?
The question that still hasn't been answered is, didn't I meet with you and address these four issues?
Yes.
Okay. So everything else that you said that I kept throwing in front of you is a fabrication because these are the four things. In the last call that we had, and forgive me, sir, I'm sorry, and I know you've had some hardship, which is why, um, even when I met with the inspectors, we still hadn't been presented with your plan, but nothing here is any different. Did I not ask you when we, when we spoke, does this, does this meet any of the, the concerns that we had? I asked you that question, right? That's a yes or no question?
Yes, it did.
Okay. And wasn't your answer to me, it doesn't address your concerns?
This is not cross-examining.
I, I'm sorry.
This is for questions.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. King. I'm asking him the question because he misrepresented what, what we said.
We don't know that. You can testify later on and tell us that.
I will do that.
But I, I think you're in the wrong part of the, of the meeting at this point.
I, just asking...
Because I think they're, they're pretty much ready to finish the application. Am I correct?
Yep.
What's your other question?
One more.
You're not going to ask the same question again, are you?
I, I'm not going to. I, I can see that you're annoyed with me and I'm not exactly sure why, sir.
It's not, it's not, it's not being annoyed. It's you, you, you...
I'm not...
When you go to court and if you, if you do trial work, a judge will tell you to move on. You've made your point.
I, I understand that, sir. I, I, again, I'm unfamiliar with your proceedings, so...
They're, they're, they're like the judges. They're, they're judging the application. They essentially have judicial obligations, so they...
I, I understand.
I, I get very upset when people keep beating a dead horse and trying to get the applicant to, to say something in, in opposition to what he had said prior. So if you have any new questions, ask them because I'd like to move this along. We've got a very busy agenda tonight, okay?
Sir, are there, are there any other three-car garages in the community?
There are four car garages in the community, as well as very large two-car garages in the community within Mount Tabor. And you have several pictures in your package.
That answer your question?
It, it, it actually didn't answer my question because I asked the gentleman before. There's an old Tabor and there's a new Tabor, the historical section.
These are in the historical section. They are not in new Tabor.
Okay. Thank you, darling.
Any other questions?
I'll wait for mine.
No? Thank you. I would like to hear from one of you regarding the comments that your architect has made and can over here. Who's telling the truth?
Uh, so the very first meeting that we had, where we went, went to Jason Castle's house and looked at the property and all that stuff, that was, do you remember the one that was?
Long time ago.
Yeah.
Probably in March.
Yeah.
Probably in March.
It was a three-hour meeting and I remember hearing the word ease.
You, you, okay.
I, I did hear the word easement. I, you know, I have brought it up.
I was not part of this meeting. I was at work that day, but when I came home, he was telling me about it and that was specifically brought up.
Do you have any other testimony or any other witnesses?
No. Um, uh, the, the, the one picture that I submitted this time with the, with the four pictures on it, the, I do have the addresses for the upper left, the four-car detached garage, if you want that, and I have the address for the, like, six-spot lot, if you, if you want those.
Is it open?
Yes. So the, the four-car garage that is block thirty-five, block ten, next to Dickerson Five, and the one, the picture next to that that just has like the six spots, that is block seventy, block one, thirty-six, more sand, both in, both Tabor.
The picture on that sheet, the lower left-hand corner, that's Mr. Castle's house?
Yes.
And the picture in the lower right-hand corner is a concept of your new home?
Yes. Like I said, it printed a little dark, so the colors would be a little bit brighter, but that's the idea.
So you feel like what you're presenting right now is what you want to build? And you think you've made a significant amount of concessions to the neighbor and you want to go with what you have? Okay?
That's our...
We have put a lot of time and effort into planning this very carefully, so we have enough room for ourselves and still don't piss off the neighbors.
Thank you.
And the plan was adjusted slightly from the very first time. We lowered the whole house six inches down to try to, you know, block less and everything like that. And that was, that was about as much as we could push it down into the ground before the driveway starts getting messed up and stuff like that.
Go ahead, Aaron.
Excuse me. Um, just to clarify for me again, uh, the Castle residence is what, south of your house or north of yours?
Yeah, east and uphill. So they're, they're here.
All right, then. All right, then what's west of your house?
A neighbor's backyard. So there's not a house there. It's backyard to the street.
Their house is technically on the next street over.
What, they, they face on, they front on two streets? Your neighbor...
Um, they're like a, a bottom lot where there's two streets coming down and they're in between.
Have they, have they had any objections?
No. I, I've met with him and he was, he said, oh, it's going to be a nice house. All right. It's going to be a big purple house, huh?
Purple house? I mean, it's purple?
So, Chairman, could I just say one thing?
All right, that's all.
Yes. Okay. So Mr. Castle was bringing up his four points. Um...
So Mr. Castle was bringing up his four points. I understand that you're raising these issues with your neighbors because I think the chairman does a good job in get, trying to get the two parties to come together to come up with a, a solution that we don't have to decide something. But sometimes we are going to have to decide it. You might, one party is not going to be as happy as they want. So you brought up, for instance, that you brought up an issue with them with height, but we don't have a height variance involved. So if there's no height variance involved, that's one issue that we don't really entertain. So you might not be pleased. You have the right to say, I think whatever, it might block this, it might block that. But when we're discussing and coming up with our solution, that might not enter into it at all. So I just wanted to point that out.
Same thing with the lot size too, because there's significantly, the whole area is a hardship, you know, it's very small.
That's all I have for you, Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions by the board? Any other members of the public have any questions? And you guys are, you feel like your testimony is complete? I think it is.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Motion to go to conference?
Well, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? Please come forward. Thank you.
Raise your right hand. You swear a firm testimony about to give before the boards yourself you got?
Yes.
For the record, can you state and spell your name and give your address?
Jason Castle, J-A-S-L-E, last name C-A-S-T-L-E, ten West Heading, heading is spelled in G-D-D-I-N-G.
Thank you, you're sworn.
Give him the microphone. You can sit down if you want. Need three chairs.
You have, you have to forgive me only because I'm going to try not to be frustrated because what I heard was a gross misrepresentation of all that's happened. There have been no concessions. There were, there were, there were zero concessions. I addressed four issues or concerns specifically with the architect. My wife met with Valerie. The four of us went to dinner. The gentleman's plans were not prepared by the time that we actually met, so we couldn't discuss them. But I vehemently disagree with the representation that was made that I've put landmines in front of you when I've done no such thing. We're not supportive of the board granting the application with regard, with regard to the current applicants for specific reasons. One, the three-car garage. Two, the setback. Those are the concerns that are before you. We did have a concern about the height. We know that that's not an application that was before you, but that was something that was spoken to the architect about. The home is designed as inconsistent with the plan and character of Mount Tabor, the character of the block that is Mount Heading, and the historical nature of the communities. Not to mention that the property proposed completely dwarfs the previous property that existed on this space before it burned down. As to the representation of the gentleman, when he said he feels my pain because of how I have to park, we actually have two parking spots that are provided by the CMA in Mount Tabor. They have two parking places within excess of a hundred and twenty-five spaces that are made available because the character of the community is such that if you have more than one vehicle, you can be assigned a parking space, which is what everyone in the community does. As it relates to the setback of the home, the setback of the home completely eviscerates any backyard that would exist for the home and actually destroys the view that if you're looking down the top of the block, from the top of the block down, it cuts off the entirety of the view of the mountains because of, again, the height of the grate room and the fact that it eliminates a backyard. So the setback is not in the character of the community. It's not in the character of the block. And if you were to simply look down the street to see how all the, all of the homes are in line with one another, it would be obvious that it is not within the character or the plan of the community. Lastly, and I just want to make sure that we're very clear on this, we did not request an easement from the spectators. Specifically, there is a retaining wall that is dilapidated and collapsing that is on their property. It is close to our property. And what we asked was whether or not they were going to rebuild that retaining wall because when we dig down on our property to create a walkway to our backyard, a walkway with permeable pavers, that we were concerned that in digging down, there was going to be an issue with their collapsing retaining wall. And it was not their plan to repair it. So I don't want to be mischaracterized and I don't want to be misquoted and I don't want to be misrepresented. But as Gavin has said, he heard something about it, the word easement. No easement was ever requested. We have two parking spots. We actually have three vehicles, which is why we have two parking spots. And there's on-street parking of the block. So I don't want the gentleman's assertions to be taken as fact when we had no discussion about those things. And if those are assumptions, those assumptions are incorrect. So those are our concerns and that's my testimony. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Any questions of this witness on testimony given?
Yeah, I have a couple just to, we've been here a number of times, obviously, and you guys are looking for your dream home and they're looking to keep their neighborhood looking the same and of course, some of the amenities they have with looking out their windows. So last time we were here, the conversation was you guys were going to get together, go over some of the issues and try to come to an agreement. So if I'm hearing straight, nothing has changed or what has changed from that last meeting? I, I guess I'll ask you guys first and then, I mean, I'll ask him. I, I'm not sure if, which direction I can ask first or I'm just.
You're asking.
Okay, I'll ask you, did anything, anything change from the plan we saw last time?
No, sir. Nothing changed from the plan that was previously presented. There's not, there's not a single change. And the representation that the spectators and the architect made accommodations for requests we made is a complete fabrication. There, there was no accommodation that was made because we sought no accommodation. The only thing that we expressed was our concern with the home being outside the character of the community. And we also expressed those concerns because those concerns were raised by the neighbor across the street and the neighbors of the block who were actually here during the first, during the first hearing. There's been no change.
Okay. Can I ask a question? You, the architect explained, did he push the building back?
He did not push the building back for us.
We pushed that back at the very beginning.
They pushed, they pushed.
So the plan we saw originally was already relocated?
We went back as far as.
Okay. I, I misunderstood you. I thought you had done something different in this course of time.
It was explained to us that the, that the reason for the setback was to accommodate the three-car garage, that the, that the home in its, in its infancy stage of planning, which we had no idea about, was pushed all the way back to accommodate a three-car garage. There was no request.
Is that true?
Pushed, true. Natively, that eases getting into the garage, no question. And I don't dispute that at all. But also, we wanted to stay as far away as we could. Seventeen feet from this wall to our, and as far back as we could to sort of open it, open it up. So that was part of the initial design thinking and any of that.
Can I?
The other point that I, if I may, the front wall of our two-story section is seventeen feet from the bound roof, from the front bound roof. And what he says is absolutely correct in that regard. Except for the back, we have a single-story section, which is the entry foyer and the bedroom on the other side, which projects forward six feet from that wall, plus the veranda. You cover that again, which is four foot six, and it's out of face of the post on the veranda. That in now, in fact, is only six foot six from the front bound roof. To say, you know, we're way back is, well, exaggerating it a bit. We're six foot six, the face of the veranda, the posts, the edge of the roof, single-story roof of that house. So we're not, we're at the height of the tall man from the bound roof. We're hardly reaching all the way back.
I do have one more follow-up to that. So if they didn't set it back as far, it was closer to the street as the character of the neighborhood, what would, how would that affect your view then? I mean, I think it would be worse than what it would be now. Just my opinion, I'm just asking you.
Yes, sir. So it's, that's a gross exaggeration of what our concern was. And what, what we said to the architect was that if you measure the setback from the block to the front of every home on that side of the street, it's about six or seven feet. Their setback is far beyond that and we would be more inclined to be okay with the application if the setback was in line with the street and if it didn't have a three-car garage. There was no consideration of us when they made their plan and to, to represent that they made a concession because we had made the request. I, I, I'm sorry, but that's just, that's.
You were not aware of the fact that we had already taken that into account in doing what we did?
The gentleman is correct. I was not aware, but I also wasn't aware of the plans that are before the board today because those plans were never provided to us.
Did you say that the, that the front of the building is six feet from, from the property?
The veranda?
What is the veranda?
The porch on the front of the house.
It's the building. It's the building. So, so you've got, you've got three feet in the back, is that correct?
Three foot six.
And you've got six feet in the front?
Six foot six.
Six foot six in front.
That, that's, that's not accurate, sir. When the gentleman came out, he actually, he actually laid out and put a stone in the middle of the driveway and said, this is seventeen feet back. So I don't know the representation he's making right now and I'm not an architect. But what I do know is that over that, the course of the three-hour meeting, that was really thirty minutes with myself while everyone, while you were outside taping things off, you put a stone in the center of the driveway. You said it's seventeen feet back. That seventeen feet back was not only behind our porch and behind the front door, you said this is where the corner of the veranda is going to start. And that, I'm sorry, sir, that, what you're saying of it being six and a half feet is a gross misrepresentation of what it was that you planned and what you said to us.
You have stated that the plan is not any.
You made no concessions.
Can I interrupt a second? We've got a survey that shows this house, the same place that we started this meeting, and it's six foot six to the front of the, the front porch.
Correct.
Wherever you put this stone, none of us were there to make any difference. That's what the plan requires.
That stone was in the corner of the two-story section of the house.
Yeah, let's, you know.
Not the very edge of the veranda. The veranda wasn't.
We'll go in no place with this stone.
Do you have any, you have any other comments? Any other questions of this witness? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? In support of this application? I can, can I ask Mr. Castle something? You got to get a little quicker on the draw. Come on. Your concerns with the, the way the house is going to look, the three-car garage and the setback being uneven compared to others, did you bring that concern to the, to the board in Mount Tabor at all? To discuss with them?
It is, it has been the topic of conversation at the board, at the board. I brought it to the CMA, but the CMA said that they don't actually have jurisdiction to make any determinations because the history of the community is that it was started as a religious community and the separation of church and state was long resolved, so they can't actually impose anything. They said that this is the appropriate form for that to be adjudicated.
Haven't had the board in, in Mount Tabor come here and object to other houses? Well, they can object to something. Yeah, they can object, they can come and object.
They've been here this week.
They've said, they've been here as objectors. They're either here tonight. Is anybody else?
At the first, at the first meeting, sir, you had, you had members of the historical committee who were here objecting to the application and questioning why there was a three-car garage, the questioning of the height and questioning the setback. That was at the first meeting that I attended. And since then, the board has, you know, given direction to the spectators, but I can tell you that all of the folks on my block who are my current neighbors now, they weren't, they weren't asked questions about whether they had concerns with the home. They, they were not.
He didn't need to. If he noticed.
Anybody within two hundred feet got noticed.
Everybody got noticed. They had the right to come here this, this meeting.
I understand that.
I don't see, I don't, that is not a requirement of this board that he goes to every house on the block and, and, and get their thumbprint on the, on the thing saying that they're in favor of.
Mr. Iratain, you're absolutely right. So you, the question was posed to the board, did you speak to your neighbors? And the representation that was made was that, yes, we spoke to our neighbors and no one had an issue with it. And I'm telling you that that was not accurate.
Well, once again, we have a, you're diametrically opposed and it's going to come down to the point where we're going to have to believe one of you.
And there is a clear, clear evidence that there is a four-car garage in the neighborhood.
Again, I asked the architect, I said, can you just show me where in the community there are three-car garages of this design? And again, what you have in front of you was never presented to me.
Doesn't mean it doesn't exist.
I, I'm not saying it doesn't exist.
Wait, 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 wait. First of all, you have every right to come to Nora's office and review all the plans. We don't have to specifically stick in. So if you haven't done your due diligence.
It's not that I haven't done my due diligence, sir.
Well, you, you have because you didn't, you're, you're making statements about things that, that were done or weren't done?
No, sir. What I'm, what I asked the architect, is there another home that has an attached three-car garage? I actually offered to walk around the community with the architect on the apparent three-hour meeting that we apparently had. And if, I, again, I don't know what's in front of you, but the picture that I just saw, the gentleman just held up of the four-car garage, I don't know where that is, but I can tell you that if you go up Tabor, or excuse me, up Heading, there, the north part of Heading is only, only garages. That's all that it is. It's garages and parking space.
Well, it looks like, this looks like it's next to a house.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. Any, uh, are there any other members of the public who wish to speak? I hear none. Conference?
Okay.
Sure.
Moved by Mr. Jaskowitz.
Yep.
Okay, moved by Mr. Berkowitz, second by Mr. Jaskowitz.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Somebody want to start?
Sure.
Dave, are you?
I'm going to abstain because I missed.
Yeah, because you came in late on. This is just to see variants, right?
Yes.
I'll go first if you want to.
Oh, please.
Okay.
Listen to the variants.
I hear where you're coming from. I appreciate it. You could be right in your feelings and we're going to just make our decision on our, you know, our interpretation. When I see this house, I do think it goes in the neighborhood. It sounds like they've made some attempts. I'm not basing my, my decision on what the architect said when it came to discussions between the two of you. Because that's a he said, she said, I wasn't there. And to be honest with you, I could see it both ways. A smart person like yourself could go into that conversation, never ask for something, but imply something and still come and say, I never asked for it. Or you could have never brought it up. I don't know. So I'm not basing it on that. To me, I look at the house, I think it goes. I don't think they're being overly aggressive in asking for anything that make, doesn't make sense to me. I think it's their property, they're building a house that kind of fits the style, it's not ostentatiously big, it's not super aggressive. So on those basis, I will be voting for it.
Mr. Ready? Mr. Ready?
Yeah, similar, uh, with, similar consideration with my colleague here, and, uh, the four points you brought up, the setback is within the limits, agreeable. Height here, there is no variance required for the height, that's nothing. Lot size in the whole neighborhood, there are similar houses. Uh, that, that is the location of this town, that, that where a lot of things are. So specifically, three-car garage to accommodate the beautiful house, and there is evidence shown today by the applicant that there's a four-car garage existing there. So I have, uh, I have no, nothing to do with that, but I'm in favor of this.
Thank you. Now, listen, Mr. Rosero.
Yeah, um, I guess, I guess my hangup was the number of meetings we had and the conversations that were supposed to be had about maybe some concessions. Obviously, that's nothing to do with the variances. And while I think it's a beautiful house, of course, um, I guess, just like I said, going through back and forth with you guys being neighbors, um, and, and talking about some of Mr. Castle's issues and some opportunities, um, you know, the concessions were, were not made. Again, based on the variances, I'll be voting yes. I just think that, um, I don't see where any concessions were made, and, and I, I think, uh, I think, Mr. Castle, I understand where you're coming from.
You're leaning yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Sorry. Mr. Perry.
Yeah, uh, so when I saw the application in the beginning, it looked like there are a lot of, uh, uh, variances requested, but at the same time, this is in Mount Tabor, a very small lot.
Mount Tabor.
So, you know, I didn't expect, uh, anything less than this as far as variances are concerned for that small lot. Uh, even the impervious coverage and the building coverage, I was concerned, but then same reason, it's a small lot in Mount Tabor. Uh, only, you know, complaint I have is that, uh, nothing has changed. Uh, the neighbor came here a few times, talked about his concerns, and, uh, the application is basically the same as it was, uh, right in the beginning. Now, what I heard is you already had made some changes, uh, when you came here and, but that, those changes were not due to neighbor's concern, it's, it's just, I don't know the reason why you didn't. But still, after looking at everything else and the variances, and I'm looking at more for the variances and, uh, how the house looks and whether it matches the community of Mount Tabor and everything, I'm okay with it, and I'll vote yes.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Um, I would say, and I'm in favor of the application, uh, and as far as the three-car garages go, considering the parking situation in Mount Tabor, I would think the neighbors would be great, uh, very happy that there's a three-car garage, and so there's less cars for them to have to fight over spaces for. And as far as the setback of the house, I don't think it's that, uh, onerous that, uh, it should affect the overall look of Mount Tabor. Uh, anything else? I think the variances, uh, anyone that concern me are really the, uh, the coverage, so I would hope that, uh, that they would provide whatever, uh, groundwater, uh, problems, uh, that the town engineer could see. I, I don't have a letter in front of me.
There was a letter, I believe they agreed you can conform and comply with it.
Based on all that, I would say, I'd be a yes, but.
Well, I'm, I'm not gonna beat the dead, a dead horse. I've heard dozens and dozens of Mount Tabor cases, and some of them fly right through, and some of them are like this, and they're not easy. And I think we all have to make concessions when people have twenty percent of the, of the lot that they are supposed to have in the zone. Uh, you know, we're, we're dealing with an application in a R3 zone, which is fifteen thousand square feet. You're never going to be able to accomplish on your lot what you could accomplish on, in fifteen thousand square feet. Uh, I'm also.
Chairman, could I just add one thing quickly? I just hope that whatever we decide you guys could get, where you're on a good page, you're gonna be neighbors, and that you both articulated your cases fairly well, and that so be it, and that we could have two happy neighbors.
Motion to come out of conference?
So move Berkowitz.
Now, do I have a, a motion to instruct the attorney to draft a resolution?
So, now, so.
Which, which includes the engineer's report.
February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, and anything, anything else? We're not, everything's up. John, you're okay with everything?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, who get, who did that motion?
I did.
Second ready, and any discussion? Nora call the roll?
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Rosero.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Irakun.
Yes. This, this, we're authorizing him to draft a resolution of, uh, granting. Okay? Hopefully, we will have that at our next meeting, you think?
Yes.
Okay? And once that is read into the record like we did tonight, then you're free to proceed with your, you know, whatever else you need to do. Okay?
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you. Good luck.
Nora, just for the record, can you record me as an abstention?
Yeah.
Okay. Good, good. We are now at case twenty-three oh one, Aaron Gonzalez. Variance to construct an addition. Mr. Gonzalez is here.
Sir, you're right-handed. You swore from testimony about you have a quote of the board's source helped to guide, and for the record, you're the owner of the subject property. You're, for the record, you're the owner of the subject property.
Sir, I am the general contact.
So you have consent of, of the owner to make this application?
He's not gonna testify? Okay. Why don't you proceed?
Okay, first I would like to hand out an exhibit.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for hearing my application this, this evening. Uh, we are requesting, we too have a small lot in Lake, Lake Hiawatha. And we are doing a, well, let, let them go through it.
Now, this was not made part of the application.
No, I, uh.
On a market A1, correct?
Correct. This would be exhibit A1. Did everybody get a copy?
We're working on it.
Let's wait till we get started.
Okay, yes, we got it. Let's just talk real quick about what variances you're looking for.
All righty.
You're looking for, um, a front yard deck, twenty-five is allowed, eighteen is proposed, side yard, six allowed, five proposed, driveway setback, five allowed.
Zero.
Zero proposed. Yards and courts open deck, twenty-four allowed, you're requesting twenty-nine point three one, building coverage, twenty is allowed, you're proposing twenty-five point four, pervious coverage, forty is allowed, you're proposing forty-three point two two. You may proceed.
Correct. Okay, um, if we, if we will, um, what I've done here is I've shown the, uh, existing survey, right? So what you're looking at, where it says the asphalt driveway, that's existing driveway. Okay, so that was already, it was already there, it was, that was what was on the zero. If you see where I say extend the driveway, that meets the setback. Okay? This is a corner lot, just so everybody knows, corner of Minehaha and Winona in Lake Hiawatha.
The driveway that you're proposing, the extension is.
Correct.
Almost in compliance.
Correct.
The existing driveway is not compliant.
That is correct.
And the coverage, basic hardscape, building, driveway, whatever you, you allowed forty percent, and you're three point two two percent over. That's it. That's it.
That's correct.
Okay. And the expansion of the house is to do what?
Okay, the plan for the house, if you can see, this house was a bit of an L shape, so we're just going to add a one-car garage to that empty corner that's there. So, um, you know, that gives some secure off-street parking for.
Okay, that's it?
Uh, and on the rear there, you see where the outdoor wooden deck?
Yeah.
There's already an existing concrete slab there.
Okay.
We're just putting a, an outside deck there.
On top of it.
On top of it, correct. And there's a bit of an angle on that concrete slab, we're gonna make the deck square.
Mm-hmm, got you.
Do just like a, uh.
That's it, right?
That's correct.
Is there a room above the garage?
Is there a room, yes.
A room?
Yes.
Yeah, you're putting, you're, you're expanding that level.
Correct. So if.
Was it a bedroom or?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll be a bedroom. So if we flip to the next page, you will see what is the existing residence there. It's a dilapidated house that was neglected, uh, that went into foreclosure and was, uh, it's called existing structure. Does everybody see that one there? So that's what's existed there. You have a question, Mr. Chairman?
No, I just say, I know exactly where it is.
Oh, you know where this one is at? Okay, so, uh, you can see the surrounding houses that I've captured there, they're generally two stories with garages. So if you then, so just, just so you understand, that is the existing structure, and if you flip to the next page, this is an artistic, uh, architectural rendering from the corner of that, um, Winona and.
So you're in a whole second floor?
Correct. We're doing at a level, and you can see where that one-car garage is at, there on the left.
Are you gonna save the foundation on this?
Yes, sir.
Any walls?
Yes. The, uh, all the outside exterior walls, this is not a tear-down. We're going to, um, build up from the footprint of the original building.
Because the town has a development fee ordinance on affordable housing, and if you make renovations on homes over fifty percent, you have to pay one and a half percent.
Okay. I was unaware of that, but we'll make that calculation.
I don't know whether the building department is going to say this is a renovation or is a re-. It would seem to me that it's a rehab, you're not gonna save much on that first floor, build on the floor on top of it.
So, so we want to, again.
You know what? We can make it a condition.
Okay.
And, and if it's not applicable, it's not applicable.
Very good, very good. Um, so again, so this, uh, second page here, drawing R one oh one, gives the bird's eye perspective of what the proposed house is. Again, it's the same first floor with the garage addition and at a level. And if you then flip to page R one oh two, this would be looking at the house from the corner, uh, at street level. So you can see that the house fits in with the character of the neighborhood, it's, uh, doesn't exceed the building height, uh, codes or anything. And when they were saying the front deck and the front, it's just that little porch that I think the engineer said was over my coverage, that little six by six front porch there.
Are you familiar with the, uh, Mr. Lizza, our municipal engineer's letter?
Yes. Uh, actually, I just received it this evening.
Okay, um, maybe we can go through it quickly.
Yes.
My copy is very faint. You have to, you have to, um, did, did you propose stormwater management?
We did not, we did not know where we were, we were.
Okay.
Required to, but we're happy to comply.
Okay, so you'll, you'll review whatever you do with Mr. Lizza to make sure.
Absolutely.
Okay.
He's requesting, uh, some study for dry well and, uh, soil checking, and that's.
Right.
Not a problem. Again, it's a small lot, sixty by a hundred, you can put a dry well system in there, it's not gonna kill the project.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I did review it.
Okay, okay.
Roof leaders go into drains and that sort of thing, not a question. And it's a flat lot, so he's asking for grading, he may. And he's saying anything about soil disturbance, the only soil disturbance would be for the foundation for the garage.
Okay. You've got a, you've got a, um, what's the word I'm looking? You're, you're, conforming, I couldn't think of that word. It's a conforming lot, six, six thousand square feet, sixty by a hundred is a conforming lot, man.
Yes.
You're lucky. There's a lot of forty by hundreds over there.
So, uh, okay, just quickly again, uh, so you have your handouts, uh, if you go to the next page, I wanted you really to show the one-car garage, that, again, we're just, uh, you know, we're building the house to sell it, right? Um, but this gives the new owner, um, a secure off, off-street parking, right? With enough room for another large-sized vehicle like a truck or a van or an SUV. Again, this little porch, it was what he was counting as some of my impervious overage.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I mean, I just wanna put a little porch there. Uh, and then if you go to the next one, this is the size of the outside deck, uh, you know, we just, uh, again, it's a concrete slab that's already there, we're just going to corner that off. It's a deck that's just one foot off the ground, uh, just for a barbecue grill, couple of chairs, an umbrella. And, and that's it. That's really, that's really my story.
Okay, any other questions by the board?
No.
Any members of, yes, no?
No.
Any members of the public have any questions of this witness? Please come forward. Please state your name and address. And you have to speak into the microphone.
Take the microphone.
Hi, yeah, my name is Kinyel Patel, and I'm owner of forty-two Winona Avenue, which is, uh, next to this, uh, forty-two Minehaha Avenue. So I do not have anything to say but like a couple of questions, like, uh, when construction is going to begin and the construction vehicle will be parked on, uh, like, uh, Winona Avenue or Minehaha Avenue, just something like that, you know?
I, I'm assuming in terms of construction, it's gonna be a pretty standard operation.
Yes.
There'll probably be a dumpster somewhere.
Probably a dumpster in the driveway.
Driveway.
I am the contractor, I have a plumber and an electrician.
So.
They generally park, uh, there's trucks on the street, they're very clean, very, uh, respectful. Did you say your address was which one?
Forty. Forty-two Winona.
Forty-two. You're the red house right across the street?
Red house, no.
The green one?
No.
Oh, my check.
The cream one, the base, yeah.
The green one?
No, cream, base.
beige, cream, cream, cream.
Most of the houses, but I.
You missed that one.
Right behind you.
Have you already been working when the ordinance is, uh, you were allowed to work?
Absolutely, yes. I've been in construction for forty-five years, like the other architect was saying, it's not his first rodeo, so we, we're very respectful.
Great.
We wanna get along with neighbors, it's always the best way to do it. They keep an eye on things and, and we're helping to improve the building, the neighborhood by restoring and renovating this house that had been in lack for some time.
Anything else?
Uh, yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one more question, like, when construction is done, right? If there is a slope of your land, it's like slanted, uh, in a way that if I get water in my property, so.
Actually, I think our lot actually slopes down this way, so I think most of the water will go into like a driveway.
The, the engineer for the board has already said he's gonna have to do certain things. He's going to have to go to them and show that water from his property doesn't go on your property.
And he's agreed that he will adhere to.
Absolutely.
That's pretty, that's very comprehensive, that document.
What you could do is read it, call the engineering department up, tell them you're the adjoining property owner and what your concerns are, and they make notes, so they'll think about it when they do it.
Okay. I mean, yeah, that's it, I don't have anything else.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given? I hear none, see none. You have no other witnesses? No? No, neither?
I do not.
Okay. And you, you've said your case, you're, you're, there's nothing else you'd like to say?
Basically, yes, I mean, uh, it's. Basically, yes. I mean, uh, it's sort of played out in the plan there. Uh, you know, we just want to put it around.
It's not a, it's not an extraordinary request, by far. So that completes the evidentiary, uh, portion of this application.
Yes, sir.
Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? In support of the applicant? Please come forward. State your name.
Yeah, are you providing testimony against this application?
I'm just, uh.
Your questions?
Yeah, clearly. I'm a brother of Kinyel Patel. My name is.
And spell your name.
Yeah, my name is Mihir Patel.
How do you spell your first name?
Mihir, M-I-H-I-R.
Okay, thank you.
So you gave us the, the paper and, uh, uh, regarding the stormwater management. And, uh, the thing is, the neighbor next to forty-two Mineha, uh, they, they built like a wall, retaining wall made of like a soil and, uh, like wooden blocks. So whenever the, whenever there is like a heavy rain, uh, the water, uh, actually flows downside. So.
Is it, is what you're talking about on his property?
Yeah, so.
He's, it's his wall?
No, no, no. The, the neighbor, uh, adjacent to the, to his property.
That's not us.
And that, and this created additional runoff?
Yeah, so it hits that wall in his property. I mean, like it's close to the fence.
I think what you need to do is to contact the township engineer and present him with the problem, not his problem, but the next door neighbor's problem of what they've done. And, and they may have never taken out permits and anything. And if you cause, if you cause, uh, you know, unnecessary runoff in the wrong direction, you can't, you can't do things like that, you know?
Yeah, that's, that's my concern. Like, uh, it, it will cause his property also. Uh, it's damaging his property as well as my property, so.
Do you want to get involved in this?
You might have to.
But something.
He's going to have to. I think you should call it the township engineer's office. Play it what the issue is and it's in contact with this.
Okay.
Because, uh, when, like, two, three years before, when there was like a storm, Ida, Ida storm?
Yes.
And it flooded all the, all our crawl space and the basement, so.
Wow.
So it was, it was a problem at that time. So that, that was my.
Yeah, we, we don't have the authority to do anything about that wall.
Yeah.
Okay, because that's not an application before.
So I just met this guy first time, so I just wanted to bring, bring up this.
Hopefully, we'll deal with it, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Speaking to that, I just wanted to know the, is there any like, uh, phone number or address to?
It's on that paper.
It's on this paper? Okay.
That's where you call.
Okay. Thank, thank you.
Okay. Okay. I asked if there's any members of public. I think we've gone through that. Do we need a, uh?
No.
Okay. Someone, someone, it's, it's not a bad application. It's improvement to the area. Doesn't, I mean, it's got, needs some variances, but I don't think it's out of whack. So someone affirm a resolution?
Uh, application twenty-three column zero-one, Aaron Gonzalez, forty-two Mineha Boulevard, block five thirty-five lot one, zone R dash four. To grant a issue, C variance to construct additions, contract to section four thirty dash thirty-five, column four, five, ten, and thirteen. And section four thirty dash two seventy-five, ten, and section four thirty dash ten I. Uh, in conformance with the engineer's report.
Second, Jasquith.
Any discussion, Nora Calderol?
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jasquith.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Montarella.
Yes.
Marie.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Irakim.
Yes. Results variance is granted. We'll memorialize this in the next meeting. You'd be free to proceed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Okay, application twenty-two seventy-seven, the Rose House, nine twenty-nine Knoll Road. Excuse me. Excuse me, excuse me for one second. Mr. O'Neill, do you think we're going to get to you? All right. Go out through. Let's go. So you're, you're seeking a variance to legalize the shed in the gravel driveway?
For the record, state your, your name.
Correct. The township, the local city, I'm coming after the applicant, Rose House. As chairman, the end of the property located nine twenty-nine Knoll Road, block ten, block four ninety-seven. The Rose House operates group homes, uh, challenging individuals, uh, who are, I think, five. Um, has operated this for six times. We appreciate, uh, the Rose House, um, as we flex the numbers, um, water shed, um, uh, measures, uh.
Any questions?
Placed it partly on the driveway and partly on the, um, grass at the top of the driveway. And the other issue is they, they added stones to round off the, the driveway itself on the side. That's it. Uh, we mentioned the decks, uh, but that was pretty disgusting myself. We never touched the decks. The decks were there when we purchased the house. So it's just, uh, two variances, uh, two variances.
Where is the shed? Is it right at the top of the driveway?
Right here.
I got a survey, but they didn't show it.
There's a second survey. I think there's.
Maybe it's stuck together.
Here it is. It's separated from the back to back.
Well, I don't get that. All right, okay. Uh, de minimis request, right? Yeah, okay. Any questions by the board?
No.
No.
Any members of the public have any questions of this witness? I hear none and see none.
I'm just going to get compliance of the engineer's report.
Uh, thank you. There's an engineer's report?
Yeah, there's. It's pretty pro forma, but I think we should read it in anyway.
Uh, you'll, you'll agree to conform to the engineer's report.
February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. It's just a standard impervious runoff. He agrees.
He agrees. Yeah, send a copy, though. Nor, and it seems like an excessive amount for the, what you've done. You might want to talk to the engineer and, um.
See if it's really needed.
Do you have any, do you have any drainage problems on the property? You're not, you don't flood anybody else's property? Did we swear here?
No.
Swear here real quick.
You swear a firm testimony about to be before the board's truth self you got? For the record, state and spell your name.
Steve Henley, ATN LEY.
And you are?
Uh, maintenance manager for the Rose House.
And you're here with their authorization?
You're what's in charge, huh?
Yes.
How long does the Rose House run?
Uh, at, at least six or seven years.
Have you ever had any flooding issues?
No.
Do you drink?
No.
Do you drink or any of the neighbors?
No.
I, I, I would, for the little bit that you've done, to, this seems like an awful lot. You might want to talk to the engineer and say, look, we, we're not flooding anybody. There's no, okay?
So the resolution is going to have that you're going to, you have to comply unless he modifies that letter, so it's in your best interest?
It, it, it sounds like it should be, you know, I'm, I'm speaking out of term. Every time I say it's a no brainer, I get kicked in the ass. That's right. Okay, um, so your testimony is complete then? Um, are any of the members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application, I hear none and see none? De minimis request, somebody make a quick resolution?
Application twenty-two column seventy-seven, the Rose House, nine twenty-nine Knoll Road, block four ninety-seven, lot ten, zone R one. Recommend granting a C variance to legalize the shed and gravel driveway expansion, contrary to section four thirty dash two seven five X, section four thirty dash ten I, and four thirty dash thirty-five, column standard thirteen. Uh, and with agreeing to talk to the engineer and adhering to his requests. Second, Kaplan.
May I, may I add something to that?
Yeah.
We should use, include a variance for the debt question. So they don't have a problem if they have one of the several properties. Fine.
Okay. Yes. Okay.
Okay, uh, any discussion, Nora Calderol?
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jasquith. Kaplan.
Yes.
Montarella.
Yes.
Marie.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Irakim.
Yes. So it's variance is granted. Obviously, you don't have to wait to do anything, because it's already done. But just clear it up with Mr. Lizza. Thank you.
Can we take our chances, Mr. Chair?
We've got one more case. John, is this going to be difficult?
I don't know.
Did we ever hear this?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is continuing.
We have two kitchens in it. This is four stories. Needs to take it up. Some stuff.
Yes. Ten pounds of shit.
Four stories. Your, 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 your problem is you never get finished anything.
Is one a flatter? You want to hang, you want to hang?
So I believe Mr. Elzane is going to be doing a fair amount of pesticide this evening. So that may help me with anything.
Can we put him on a seven o'clock meeting? How long do you need, Joe? Half hour?
Half hour.
Forty minutes? Let's do a seven o'clock meeting? Because then if we run over a little into the next, it's not. Now, you know, we're, we already got three meetings next month. August, we always take one so that we can go to the beach and relax.
You got three meetings?
July? Yeah, we got the, uh.
Yeah, we have a special meeting.
A special meeting for.
Uh, my, my next meeting, we have three people on the special.
We're told July twelfth for a seven o'clock meeting available.
July?
Twelve.
Twelve, seven o'clock, special meeting. And actually, you obviously have the patent special.
Okay. We will carry it.
Yes.
For that special, we will renotice, because it's.
No, you don't have to.
Notice just that, I don't think there's anybody here.
And all extensions.
Yeah, you get some extension and, okay, good. Is there a motion to that effect?
Someone.
Is there a second? Second, someone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. We'll see you, uh, when we see you.
You too. Chairman, can I take a one minute break? Yeah. One minute?
One minute break. Sounds good. Mr. Jasquith needs a party break. Go ahead. Be careful there.
I think he's in a better place.
Yeah.
No entries following, keep your constant updates, and then we ran it. See, that church.
My granddaughter just turned fifteen. Well, she turns fifteen July one.
She's going on thirty or twenty-five?
Oh, please. Uh, so.
She's the athlete, right?
Yeah, she's a good golfer. Good golfer. I, I, I am for, I look forward to playing with her.
She hit the ball for the.
Yes, she does. Yes, she does. She's so limber, you know? I'm like, kind of come through the ball and not hurt anything. Yeah, when the, we, when we played. When we played the Knoll that one day, she outdrove me on a number of balls. She could have had three fires in a row, too. She just missed, she had a fire. She, she hit number six, which is a pedestal green, surrounded by traps. She hit the green, okay? And then she three putted, otherwise she would have parred that all. Then she parried number seven, which is part, she would have parred four. And then she just, she was on the fringe with three. And, and had, and had, could have been a make. It's just fun to play, it really is. She's such a good shooter. Like my granddaughter. She's very good.
How's that course you have down the beach?
It's a, it's a.
Is it short, long?
It's a tough course.
You know, it's no difficulty down there.
You know, uh. I promised it to her.
Already?
Let's call the next case, which is? Something.
Twenty-two eighty-one.
Twenty-two eighty-one.
Salala Elzon, eight eighty, Littleton Road, block one ninety-five, lot thirty-nine. Zone R three.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So you've already been sworn, correct?
No.
Could you raise your right hand?
Absolutely.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give before the board's truth self you got?
Yes, I do.
And you're the owner of the home?
Absolutely, yes.
But weren't you sworn last time?
Yes, I did.
Nice double sworn.
Really has to tell the truth now.
Double sworn.
Here we go.
Can you hear me right now, good?
Yes, we can hear you.
Last time I checked, he is sitting like a neighbor. Really, I don't know what's going on. The meeting going on, I don't understand enough. But today here, just very much I'm coming in, preparing myself as much as we can for the last discussion over, over here. And myself, I don't have no experience building house before, but my architects here, like, that's he did the whole work. And sometimes when you go to a doctor and you complain about your knees and the doctor asks you to open your mouth, you will, because he's a doctor. And that time I trust my architect to do everything for me, actually. And I did come, the last time when I hear, I talk to him, I tell him, please, do everything the board requires to do, where it makes it easy for them, when I'm here. Not to tell anybody of you, but to help, asking you to help me to build the house. That's my idea for me, for my kids. And he did a lot of change. I'm going to give you, if you don't mind. Going to give you the change he did. I'm going to give you one, on all of you, just, uh, his sheet to look at what he done. As possible, please. You can leave your. Thank you.
Sir, are you marking something that you haven't given to the secretary, or is that part of the package, Nora?
No, no, that's.
This is something on your document?
Yes.
So I'll mark that A one, and can you tell us what that is?
That's the change happened from the last meeting. All the, uh, the thing that you concern and the architect he did, all that. And actually, if you have any question, you have to have, uh, the, to ask the architect for it, to answer the questions. Is the architect here? Yes, he's here.
Okay, so just for the record, A one is a letter dated May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three from a Joffrey El Gogan architect.
So we, we should have architect explain to us. Yes, yes, he will, he will do that, yes. Yes, I'm building this house actually for my kids and my family. I have, I have eight, six kids, and all of us, we live in, right now, we live really in a very bad condition. We live in the three bedrooms, all of us right now. It's really very difficult for us. What we're asking you here today, just to help us, just to build this house, we can build it. I'm not really want, the one to spend a lot of time talking to you, because I see here one person taking all your time. I don't really want wasting your time. But I can answer any question or any concern that anybody can ask me.
Sir, the only, I have a question. The only variance that's remaining is the, is the existing lot size. There's no proposed variance?
That's correct, sir. Only that, and we did, actually, they recommended for us to ask the neighbor, if anybody want to sell, there is, or anybody can buy, or we had, and we did send a letter actually to DOT, and no response. That's me knowing, no one's going to buy or sell. The only concern right now is the lot size.
Did you just say you eliminated all the variances and just left one yet?
Yes.
Is that true?
You got the three stories versus two and a half stories.
It's not still.
That remains.
How come? It's just because he eliminated right, right now, he telling you that.
Slow down. I can't, I'm not bothering you.
Okay.
You have to talk slower.
Absolutely.
Please.
Sure. Thank you.
Do you still have a three story building?
Did you do anything with the height?
No, no, nothing wrong with the height.
That's not me to decide.
Yeah, we should.
We always had the, the township determine that the garage level and the base, what you call a basement, and the bedrooms and the bathrooms. That's the story. Then you have two more stories. So you had a three story versus two and a half stories.
Okay, I look at it.
That one still remains.
I look at it.
And the lot, and the lot size. I just want to.
I look at it as two and a half. This is just a finished out, finished basement with the workout. That's about it.
That's the same thing we talked about last time, I think, right?
Look, look.
Yeah, we, we did, there is, there is a creation room. We just open it like, open space.
The last plan I have for Mr. Gogan is dated. Who is it dated?
I don't know why.
The last plan I have from Mr. Gogan is revised five-seven twenty-twenty-three, showing the garage, uh, in the basement, ground basement level, the garage, rec room, uh, bathrooms, bedrooms. That's the last plan, correct?
That's correct.
So what, why isn't that a story?
It's not, the recreation room is not there anymore, just making open space.
All bedrooms?
It says, it says recreation room, right on it.
You want to answer that?
Yeah.
Okay. You can answer that, architect, you can answer that.
It doesn't make any difference what you call it, it's a floor. You can label it whatever the hell you want, I'm, I'm sorry. You can label it whatever you want, but it's still a floor.
What make it not floor? What is required that for me right now, I can eliminate.
You'd have to, you'd have to eliminate it.
Eliminate what?
It wouldn't be excavated. Right now, you've got a full excavated area, most of it is out of the ground, based on the pictures that were provided, I guess, Mr. Gogan, you made those?
Yes, uh, I, I'd like to say something about that.
And Mr. Gogan, for the record, you've already been sworn, and you qualified, you're still qualified, all your licenses are full.
Yes. Our intention was to have a compliant two-and-a-half story with a full walkout basement. It, it is partially finished, and we counseled with Morgan Engineering about the definition of basement, the ordinance definition of basement, and we had them do the calculation, which the ordinance requires. And basically, you, you take, uh, the full perimeter of...
I hear what you did, but the zoning officer said it's a floor. That's the authority that the, that the board operates on. I went back, I heard your testimony, I went back through the orders myself, and I support that conclusion. So Morgan Engineering is not the zoning officer for, for Cypriotory Oaks.
Nor did they give testimony.
Well, I, I'm just saying that, that we, we added some notes on this latest iteration, it is still the same calculation, but if the board doesn't agree with that and, and wants to call it a, a story for the purpose of the application, I guess, I guess you could do that, we would have to keep that variance in, but, you know, we, our intention, it, it, you know, it is pretty much a, a fully...
You, you can just explain it, yeah, it's a walkout, it's a full excavated, but you only got a little bit of the front is looking like a two-story, based on your picture, and all the rest of it is out of the ground, or less.
Right, it's basically a...
I mean, we...
A walkout, walkout drive-off basement.
And this is where we left it last time, I thought.
Yeah.
So what changed?
Well, we did change quite a bit, we...
No, but, but, so this is what happened last time.
They got rid of kitchen.
Right, and we went through a cer, in circles. John, just the chat just said that it's, on three sides at least, they're all exposed, okay? The zoning officer came out and said it's a three-story, you need to address that one issue, and we don't seem to be addressing it, am I right, or am I wrong?
Well, you can see the variance, or, or, and show why he is seeking a variance.
Right, but he's arguing that it's not.
Well, he's, he, I think we abandoned that.
Oh, did we abandon that?
Maybe I misunderstood you, but...
I hope you're right.
I mean, it's, it's, it's definitely, um, an area that somebody could have a different opinion on. And our intention was not to create a story, and so we, we followed the ordinance and tried to make sure that we were, we were filling it up around the front and the sides, too.
Well, your pictures clearly show the back is totally exposed, the sides are exposed, the front is the only one that is not.
Right, but the, the exposure, for example, this, this is the right, this is the left.
You know what, well, I'm wasting the board's time for you, I'm discussing this because it isn't. The zoning officer said it's a story.
Okay, excuse us, please.
I'm not trying to be hard in it, but change your rating, do whatever.
Now, what the board required for me to do right now, because I need to...
Eliminate that bottom floor.
Eliminate that, is the walkout floor?
You just asked us what we require, we just told you eliminate the bottom floor, and now you're countering that.
How we gonna eliminate that, but it's not possible.
Don't have a, don't have a three-story building, have a two-story.
This is the basement, by, according to, I asking to do that, I sent it to the, uh, Morgan Engineering, the people who, uh, they define.
Yeah, I, I, I want to talk about this.
Sure.
My, my townhouse.
Yeah.
And you are very familiar with it.
Yes.
It's totally open in the back.
Yeah.
On the two side, I mean, one side is another house, right, the Mr. Townhouse, but three-fourth of the side is, uh, above the ground, only front is in the ground, and my townhouse is not four-story, because it's in the, it's a basement, walkout basement, right? And then I have a first floor and a second floor, similar to this, so that's why I'm a little bit confused as to why we are calling this a four-story, where I, my townhouse is almost similar to what you have, and you are familiar with that.
It's a three-story.
Yes, sir, thank you, thank you.
Three-story, yeah.
Thank you very much, excuse me for a second.
But it's similar to that, the basement, I'm talking about the basement. My basement is open only, only, it's fully in the ground in the front.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with that.
So that's, that's why I'm, I'm surprised that, uh, even last time we made the comment, I was wondering that why we are calling this, this is a basement, we, uh, walkout basement is like that, it's open in the back.
You have seen one side is, the ne, neighbor wall is there, that is covered.
No, but, because I'm in a townhouse, but...
Yeah. The front, front one is almost covered.
Let, let me, let me, let me tell you, I, I was on a Maryobloof Road, where also, one side was in the ground, and I took our garage there, and it's all open, in the back, in the, in, on the side.
But, but, what?
There was a basement.
Did you have like, uh, bedrooms and kitchen in the basement?
He's, he's eliminating that.
No, no.
No, you still have a bedroom and kitchen?
No.
No kitchen, bedroom?
Bedroom.
No kitchen, yes, there is bedroom. You know what, I eliminate like it now, here, this point, directly, I gonna eliminate the bedrooms. I want to finish this tonight, otherwise I'm not gonna make it. I'm gonna eliminate the bedrooms.
Open, open floor?
Open floor, one, two, excuse me. Uh, what's your name, I'm sorry, Jesse?
Sir, sir, this is not making video.
I'm not making videos, sir. I say, I'm not making videos, get the real, like, straight, the real, like, come here over here, Jesse, everybody, can let me talk, please.
Hello, hello, sir. Hello, hello.
Yes.
It's all due respect.
I saw your meeting.
Calm down.
What's going on?
One thing. Calm down, calm down.
Are you a comedian in real life?
Leave me.
I, I, if I can just...
Listen, uh, one, let me mention something very important, you know what, right now, I live in three-three-seven Bear Road. It's open.
Talk to everybody else, just not me.
It's open, uh, 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 walkout basement, and the back is open, and sun is open. Very much similar to what I have, what I live right now, three-three-seven Bear Road. That's my house where I live right now, and the, the, where I live, there is a bathroom in the basement. Where I live, there's a room in the basement.
Careful.
So we'll be there tomorrow.
You might want to stop there.
Uh, okay, as long as you don't have a kitchen, that's what you know.
Kitchen and bedrooms.
I, I, I think, I think where we got...
Let's, let's be honest, if, if he says I'm not gonna put a bedroom in there, and then after this is all done, how is the contract that comes in, no, no...
But at least, uh...
Builds, builds the walls and mix them, not, never the twenty-two.
I, I, I think our hang-up last meeting was, was the fact that the attic was also had rooms in it, so that created the extra floor.
Yeah, the, the, the real issue here is...
An open-air stairway. Yeah, that, that was where we got the hang-up last time, to make it another floor.
The story of floors are tied to the grading.
Okay.
And what they've got is this building is three-quarters out of the ground, the front is closed, so it becomes a, a story. If they adjust the grading, he can put whatever he wants down, he can put a kitchen, but he's gotta get the grading up the sides of these buildings.
Can that be done?
Sure, why not? How much dirt are you gonna take off this property? Since it's written on the plan, why don't you just read it to the board?
I think it's important to remember that this is a steep slope site.
Right.
Coming from two-oh-two down the hill, you didn't see the topo here. It's a difficult site to build on, so we, if we were to, for example, try to eliminate a basement and set the whole building down, you, you would be, you, you're, at, at the grade in the front, you'd be at the second floor level, essentially. So, you, you know, we, we really need that, that full foundation to bring the two stories that you're gonna see from the street up high enough to see it.
How much, how much dirt are you gonna take off the property? It's written on there, one of the charts.
There is a cut and fill calculation here, but it's mo, I believe it's mostly cut and fill, and there's not a whole lot being removed, removed.
There's a calculation there.
There is a calculation on there.
It's about thirty thousand cubic yards?
Thirty thousand cubic yards?
No.
That sounds unbelievable, that's like taking the whole property away.
No, it's, it's, the area where the house is going is already about that level, that's about where the slab in the basement is, so we're not digging out a lot to create, it's already hollowed there, where the hill goes down.
So can't you fill dirt around the sides?
We are filling, uh, uh, around, toward, up against the front of model.
If you just ran it back further along the sides of the building, then you'd no longer have... You'd be, you'd be back to the, the definition where it's not a story, it's a basement.
Right.
He's giving you an easy answer.
You've got the cubic...
The problem is, it drops off toward this back corner. We've, we're already putting a short retaining wall and filling, uh, and, and doing the best we can on that side.
You could eliminate those windows and, and build it up.
And the back, uh, we have the drive-on on one side, you know, we have your garage on one side.
Yeah.
That's the back.
So that's the, the, the right side of the house.
That's exposed side, the rest of them you could cover over. And then if we get out of this, I mean, it would just seems like we're...
You know, I, I'd like to read the definition of basement from the ordinance, if, if, I think that might be helpful.
You did not advertise for an interpretation, you advertised for both variances. You can't go back and ask for an interpretation now. Mr. King, why don't you tell me, stop laying lawyer.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, that's interpretation, it's a...
Well, you know, you're asking the board to do an interpretation, you're gonna read in, in the ordinance and try to get an interpretation from the board, uh, the zoning officer already has determined that this is a story based upon exactly what our professional, um, planner has told you. All you gotta do to make it not a story is bring more dirt to the sides and get that calculation up for coverage, and, and there's no problem.
Can we agree that, have, let's skip the basement question, what about the attic question? Can we agree that that's not a story anymore?
No.
You took the store, stairs out, no buildings.
It's a pull-down.
Pull-down, storage, maybe.
So now we're dealing with three stories instead of four?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just, just doesn't look that bad, and I know where the property is, and I, I know how that, that, right by the road that goes by, by Troy Hills Village, and, uh...
All right, so...
How far is that, the front of that house gonna be to the, to the, to the street?
Way back.
Yeah, I, I don't even, this, this... It's gotta be what, forty, fifty feet?
One point four from the property line. But the property line is way back from the curb.
Are, are, aren't there trees in front of the property?
Yes.
And you're gonna leave the trees there?
I'm saying that there is a forest, actually, there is a property, yes, it to me, is the road to, uh, DOT. There is nothing on...
The whole front area on the side of the driveway has heavy trees.
Yeah.
And they're gonna stay.
He says they're gonna stay.
Well, you showed a grading right down the middle of the property from Littleton Road. Over on the sides, I guess you gotta leave something. Yeah.
Do we need to get a new letter of interpretation based upon the new plans?
No. What, you mean interpretation DEP?
No, from the zoning officer.
Uh.
Do we know what?
No, they haven't made, they haven't changed the footprint at all, they haven't changed the driveway. It was all the inside.
I thought you said they removed certain variances.
We, we, we did, we did change the driveway, and we eliminated some locks, and we, we reduced the coverage.
Okay. You never had a variance in the coverage anyway, did you?
I'm sorry?
You didn't have variance?
The one, the one was needed.
Originally, we were, uh.
Oh, twenty, now you're under it?
Now we're under thirty.
You're under thirty.
Okay. Yeah, nine, twenty-nine, nine, forty-nine, eighty.
Well, we, we reduced it.
We got there, we got there.
And we, uh, yeah, made all those, the changes.
And the building I is.
Building coverage is the same?
Building coverage was reduced, also, we had a little bit of a variance before, but we've eliminated that.
So what's your building coverage now?
Building coverage proposed is, uh, uh, fourteen point nine.
All right, the zone requirements that are shown on your plan, or not your plan, this is Morgan's plan, does reflect all the changes you described in your letter.
Yes.
Because you couldn't tell, I wasn't sure I was.
All right. There were slight changes, but it made a big difference.
Okay, the, the, the only correction would be that you are still required two and a half stories, three stories proposed. We can eliminate that by slightly grading and bringing some dirt along the sides of the house.
Are you okay with that?
We, we could, we, that would be feasible, we, we could increase the, um, the height of the grates on the front and the, and the left side.
You only have to get them back. It's the cubic volume that is above the finished grade. And precipity, for some unknown reason, requires you to measure the grates. Was it six feet off the wall, or something like that?
The height, it is, yes.
Yeah, some, you could do it. So you're down to an undersized lot, which you have no available. Did the state ever get back to you?
No.
They don't respond.
You'd think they'd wanna get rid of that piece.
Yeah, it's a big, big land, they wish they sell it.
For once, well, the state owns a whole great big lot right next to it. When they, when they ran the ramp through there, they moved Littleton Road around, they, they got, had to buy, it's a pretty good price, dude.
So Johnny, you saying if he just puts some dirt around the side?
He'll make it a basement.
Okay, so you understand that, you're good with that? Okay. No, no, so you're good with that, what else do we need to do?
Nothing.
Okay.
He took, he took the stairway out of the attic.
Right, so that's not a.
That's gone.
Yeah, okay.
He's got the kitchen out of the basement.
There we go. Dammit.
Yes.
He says he'll put the dirt in, and then John says he will be adding.
So.
The only other thing is that driveway where you connect to Littleton Road, they got, you gotta put a curb return on there at some point. You can't have that ninety-degree connection. The driveway.
Yeah, there's, you mean, uh, more, more tapered curb, uh.
You need some, some curb return there, yeah.
It, it is existing curve, uh, where it drops down. So one of the driveways appears, so we're, we're supposed to keep that exact same. We didn't, now, now.
Okay.
You know what, it's a tough piece of property, and hasn't been a house on that property in probably ten, fifteen years, at least, maybe less. Because when they, when they redid that stretch of road, they pretty much took the frontage off of that property. And how it remains on, you know. So any, any other questions by the board? We still, is this variance gone too, for yards and courts?
Well, should we, should we have a, um, site plan done, sent to the, uh, zoning officer? Review it for compliance, it's gonna eliminate a number of these requested, uh, uh, variances. And the only one, actually, there's only probably gonna be potentially one, which is the, um, lot, which is easy.
Have we eliminated the basement?
Well, if he, if he adds the dirt, he eliminates the basement. Yeah, he's gotta put that in the plan, and, and that's the plan that gets accepted by the, um.
Morgan's gotta draw that plan.
Do you, you understand?
Yeah, we reduced the deck size to eliminate the yards and courts.
You put that all in?
So could, can we give them, can we vote on the one variance tonight and, and get a resolution?
Subject to the.
Subject to them.
Providing the appropriate.